Any questions? All right, moving down to social security, an amount of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. Any questions or comments?
How much was that?
Um, ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you. I take it that's the social security on salary here?
Multiple. Any comments? All right, moving down to three percent COLA instead of five percent, in the amount of four hundred eighty thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. Any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic?
Yeah, it is, but it's three percent COLA instead of five percent for the salary and social security, in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-five.
Where is that coming from?
It's the total increase for the five percent.
No, but I'm talking about changing that three percent instead of five percent.
Levin?
How do you mean where is it coming from?
I mean.
It's coming from all departments?
But these are reductions.
Correct.
Yes, it's total.
Right, that's the same, from us.
From all, the county.
That's the recommendations that's been made, Bill, from different council people. Yeah, I just don't remember, I don't remember that being made.
It probably wasn't discussed, some of these are.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Right, well, that's what we're here today for, is to take a look at the compilation of, of recommendations or concerns that different council members had. I know there's some that I had, and that I would talk to Mrs. Hurley about, or I would talk to Levin about, and I think the idea here was that there was a concern on the five percent. I know I had a concern that the five percent might be too high, and of course, all this is in, in, with the understanding that we, we're not quite sure what's going to develop over the next six months alone. And so, in the process, Levin did a spreadsheet that broke it down as to, you know, what it would be if it were a two percent increase, a three, three and a half, four, four and a half, and five. And, you know, what I thought would be a good compromise would be a three percent COLA for now, and that way, we felt that would offset the minimum wage increases and whatever compression might result.
All right, all of the council members made recommendations, and the staff worked on it, and this was printed off for us to go by as a guideline tonight, and that's why we're asking discussion questions. Is there any more discussions on that? All right, moving down to the next one, change finance director to minimum for a grade of twenty-three, and that is the amount of sixty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any comments? Moving on, reduce the director of administration salary to two hundred, or, I'm sorry, twenty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars is the, would be the cut. Any discussion?
So what would it be cut to?
Whatever that total is, from minus one hundred and twenty.
Yeah, did we just discuss that?
The other day?
Yeah, right, we decided we weren't going to cut that. We had total consensus on the council.
We weren't going to cut what?
Yeah, we weren't going to cut that.
I think what is.
It's not a full cut, it's a cut from what the current recommendation was.
So which other take it to?
Well, it's in the budget, let me pull that up.
Wayne, do you remember how much your salary is proposed for in the fiscal year twenty-one budget? It's over the hundred and twenty thousand, so I believe it was like a hundred and forty-something, so what you're showing here is.
So this gets this to that.
To one twenty.
It gets it to the one twenty.
Yeah, it should end up being the hundred twenty, okay.
The thing is, you're going to just take in my current salary, and then for fiscal twenty-one, taking it to one twenty.
We're good with that.
Okay.
Yeah, just clarification.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, that helps.
All right, there's a recommendation to reduce the National Association of Counties' membership, and that would be out of community promotions, an amount of one thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Any discussion? All right, moving on, advertising, forty-five hundred dollars. Any discussion?
Yeah, I wouldn't support that.
Okay. Any more comments?
This is, so it's a reduction in.
Can you speak into the mic?
It's a reduction in what they've, it's a reduction in what is budgeted, correct?
Levin, do you remember what the total was?
Yeah, so the, this is for the executive department's budget, the proposed budget has five thousand for advertising, the ask was forty-five hundred, take forty-five hundred away, making it five hundred.
You can't do it, they can't, what can they do with five hundred?
In fiscal, in fiscal year seventeen, it was three hundred and eight dollars, in eighteen, it was four ninety-seven, in nineteen, it was one ninety-one, in twenty, it was a hundred and sixty, in twenty, in the revised twenty was five hundred, and now, for this one, it's five thousand, so I, you know.
Wayne, do you know what the purpose, I mean, what the intention is to do with the advertising money?
Right, when we looked at it last, it was only five hundred.
So in the past five years, it's averaged anywhere from two hundred to five hundred, and now, it's in here at five thousand, so there's not much description in this budget on some of these itemizations, so I think the idea was that five hundred was good last year, it's good this year, and I don't even think two hundred's been spent of the five hundred this year, and we're almost, we're almost through this year.
So, I mean, how are we paying for like, I know we have some billboards and things like that, I mean, a billboard costs that much in a month?
It depends on, it depends on the department that has the billboard, so if it's a tourism department billboard, it would be paid out of the, if it's an airport, it would be paid out of airport.
I'm just using the example of like, I know we have the one with the executive and the governor.
Open for business.
For business, so wouldn't that come out of the executive?
That was six years ago.
Originally, yeah.
And the sign's still up, so it'll still be paid for.
I think, Bill, I think if there was, if there was an advertising budget, if there was a promotions budget, if there was a branding for Wycomico County budget, this would all be part of the same, but as we have it right now, it's only, you know, it's only a five-digit number.
Yeah, but it seems like such a small number, yeah, it's like, I would think we'd be spending, selling ourselves to the public, you know.
Any more discussion? All right, next on the list is office supplies, in the amount of seven thousand dollars.
What is this typically at?
So that one was proposed at twelve thousand, revised budget for FY twenty was eight thousand, the proposal is cut seven thousand, so cut it down to five.
So the total now would be five thousand, but the cut would be seven thousand. Any discussion?
Do we know what's being utilized now, or is that an appropriate cut?
The actuals for FY twenty was six, about sixty-four hundred. I just want to make clear, I didn't make these recommendations, these are just a culmination.
We thought you made them.
Right, you're just offering the numbers that we requested, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, moving on then. Next is vehicle expenses, fuel, in the amount of seven thousand dollars.
Fuel was budgeted for twelve thousand, the proposed budget, revised budget for twenty was fifty-five hundred, the actuals for FY twenty was fifty-eight hundred.
Thank you, Levin.
In hindsight, I should have put all that in this table.
That's fine, you get to participate now. Any more discussion on that?
Who was that tell again?
For the cut, sir, a seven thousand dollar cut, to take it down to five thousand.
All right, moving on to meetings, seminars, and conferences, the reduction amount would be seven thousand dollars. Levin?
The budgeted amount is fif, proposed budget is fifteen thousand, revised budget for FY twenty is ten thousand, the actuals for FY twenty is sixty-five hundred, so the proposal made in this would cut it down to eight thousand.
So there's still an increase. Any discussion? All right, moving on, contractual services, the reduction would be twenty-five thousand.
The budget, the proposed budget is twenty-five thousand, the revised and actuals for FY twenty were zero, the proposal would make it zero for FY twenty-one.
All right, any discussion?
Were there any particular plans for that, or are we? Guys?
All right, any more discussion? Moving on, contingency, reduction would be eight thousand dollars. Levin?
Executive's contingency budget, eight thousand was the proposed budget, revised budget for FY twenty was five thousand, the actuals for FY twenty was zero, the proposal in this table would make the budget zero for FY twenty-one.
Okay, any discussion? All right, moving on, there's a one-time expense, an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be reduced.
So the FY twenty-one budget for one-time expenses is twenty-five thousand, the revised budget for FY twenty is twenty-five thousand, the actuals for FY twenty was twenty-four thousand eight hundred, the proposal on this table would take the budget down to zero for FY twenty-one.
Okay, some questions, comments? All right, moving on, transfer in county appropriations, reduction, seven hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars from the airport. Levin?
So that's the, that's the estimated transfer for the county to send to the airport, that's the entire amount, seven hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred and ten. I think that has to do with the CARES Act funding that the airport's receiving.
My only question with that is, is that the proper way to handle those funds?
Can we transfer it like that?
Right.
Can we transfer those funds ourselves?
Well, we make recommendations, and if you look at the bottom, the recommendations for it to go to roads, and that recommendation is only, if it doesn't, if Mr. Culver, the administration doesn't take it to roads, it would just go into the reserve fund. And we got eighteen million dollars from the.
CARES Act.
CARES Act, so, and we have to keep in mind, all these numbers, you know, at some point in time during the year, if there's money needed, they can come back to us for.
A simple request.
For a transfer.
All right, any more questions, comments? Next, you have new auto leases, an amount of eighty-three thousand dollars to be reduced from Fund Forty-Seven. Levin?
So the current proposed budget is three hundred and forty thousand, the budget for FY twenty is two hundred and twenty thousand, Nick Rice provided, counsel with a letter saying there was going to be eighty-three thousand in new leases scheduled, and that was the proposed cut in this table.
Okay, questions, comments?
In place of those new auto leases, would that be continued, or we still have some of the fleet under new lease and some of it under old system?
The amount left in there would pay for what last year's lease was.
So, yes, Josh, you would still have some vehicles that are owned by the county, you just wouldn't be selling those and getting new leases at this time.
Gotcha.
But the budget does leave an amount in there to pay for the leases that we're currently in.
Right. It was like two hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Something like that.
Yes, okay, the total reductions would be two million nine hundred and eight thousand two hundred dollars. All right, moving on, council also makes recommendations, an increase in the sheriff's salary to fifteen thousand dollars, that would be the addition amount.
My only question, is that within our scope?
Yeah, it is.
Is it within our scope to give people?
We did it.
To pick and choose who we give a raise to?
Seven or eight years ago, I think we did it, wasn't it?
That was the last rate.
Yes.
Well, we get recommendations from the compensation committee, and they actually usually recommend the sheriff, which they did in two thousand seventeen.
Right, there was a recommendation two thousand seventeen, there's a real misconception here, everybody has sort of always felt that the sheriff salaries could only be increased the first year we come into office, after the recommendation is given to the council. They've always given recommendations for the executive's office and for the sheriff, they sort of added the sheriff in there since he was an elected official, but by the charter, the recommendation is actually only supposed to be for the county executive, and only the county executive would be held to that increase at the beginning of that elected year.
Now, I'm properly aware of that, I've served on that, well, until I was back in office, I've served on that compensation committee.
Yes.
But that's also, it's to the office, I mean, we should be doing it to the office, like, that committee recommended the executive salary to be substantially increased, because our, our executive salary is the lowest in the state of Maryland by far, and so it should be to the position, I mean, it should be an individual thing, you know, picking and choosing which individuals we want to give raises to, it should be, does that position, does the office of the county executive, for example, what should that salary be? You know, and the office of sheriff, what should that salary be? You know, not who holds those offices, or who persons on the council like or don't like, it should simply be to the off, to the position, so, so I guess, where's the evidence from a peer group standpoint, that that position should be higher?
Well, the council could.
Data?
The council can make that, just any time we want, if you look at what other sheriffs are making, I think this is part.
That's what I'm asking.
This is part of what the committee did, I mean, Dorchester County right now, as small as Dorchester County, you know, they're in the, they're in the range of about what Sheriff Lewis is making right now, so you have the sheriff in Wycomico County making the same amount of money as the sheriff in Dorchester County, and that's part of what I think the committee was concerned about, and there were numerous counties similar to that.
Well, what about the executive office? We weren't even close.
I'm, I'm, right now, the issue on the table is the sheriff.
Right.
So that's, those are the questions I'll ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, it doesn't set up for a good situation to look for favoritism or other kind of thing, you know, it'd be better if money goes to the office, and then it's distributed from there on out, because otherwise, it just, it kind of puts us into an awkward moral.
What do you mean it goes into the office?
It'd be nice if it, instead of going to one particular entity, in this case, we know this is an elected official position, right, and money goes to them, it'd be nice if it were, went to, into a general pot, and from there, they chose to distribute out, because otherwise, it looks kind of awkward, I mean, it looks, there could be a lot of room in the future for, you know, funding, I'd say that's not an activity that I would generally want to, to do it in this manner. If we go through a study, and that's every day, we decide that every year we want to raise the salary up, that's fine, but having us dole out cash, doesn't appear as ethical, it'd be better to go through a process again, and then to accept those recommendations.
I don't think there's any unethical measures, measures involved whatsoever, we're doing it publicly, and we're doing it as part of the budget process, and we're doing it by, by what the charter allows.
Yeah, well, I'll definitely agree with Mr. Hastings on that, it's just, I just don't think it looks good, once again, this has nothing to do with, quote, like, individuals and so forth, this is to the office, number one, I don't see any of our, I don't see any of the data, I mean, I know you mentioned Dorchester, but there's twenty-four or twenty-three other counties, I mean, I want to see the data, but regardless of that, it is an elected official, you know, it's, you know, certain county council person, I don't know if it's person or persons or whatever, that, say, well, you know, like I said, you're kind of picking, I'm like, this individual, I want to give him more money.
I don't think it's any different than what, I don't think it's any different what our responsibility is than what the executive's responsibilities are, the executive can, can recommend raises to any department head at any point in time, because that's, that's what he's allowed to do per the charter, we're allowed to make the, we're allowed to make the increases if we choose to for the, for the sheriff, and at the beginning of the year, we can make that recommendation for the executive and the sheriff if we choose to.
But we don't elect the head of public works, that's not an elected position.
I understand that, but that's what I'm saying, though, by charter, our oversight is on the executive branch and on the sheriff's department, and so what we are doing is no different than what the executive would do every year with the, with the twelve departments in, under his, under his control.
But we don't increase.
Excuse me?
The charter doesn't allow us to increase.
It's a recommendation, Bill.
Bob's got to agree to do that.
It's a recommendation.
I mean, I know that, I perfectly know that, but they did, but my point is, they did not recommend that, and.
I understand.
It just, yeah, I think it does, it does get a little gray.
Right.
Is there, is there a compensation committee that just reviews all salaries of elected officials?
No, it's.
I mean, that seems like that would be.
The compensation committee has to meet every, it's every four years, it's the last, they meet in the last, Laura, Laura, you can probably help, John's talked to Laura, they meet in the last, it's in our charter.
Yeah.
They have to meet, and I think it's in the last year prior to the election.
Yeah, they have to submit their recommendations at the beginning of the fourth year of your term.
Right, and it's an appointed committee, and they make recommendations for the county executive salary and.
The council.
And the council members.
Right.
And we've asked for them to do recommendations for the sheriff's salary.
Right. And they do that every four years.
And then we have the Singer Study that was done back in two thousand and eighteen for employees, for all positions in the county.
For the record, I'd agree that the sheriff's salary is definitely, it's not what it is in other counties, I'm aware, but I don't, I have an issue with the process.
It's really the only process we have available.
We need to fix process.
I agree, that, well, we can put that in the charter, recommendations for the charter amendments, I agree.
All right, so is there a consensus to make this recommendation?
We didn't make a consensus on the rest of them, so why are we doing this one?
Well, let's wrap it up, let's go through, let's finish the list.
All right, let's move on then. All right, the next is special prosecutor and investigator, and the recommendation amount is two hundred sixty-five thousand, and this is for the state's attorney's office. Any discussion? All right, moving on, the next recommendation is social security for three above positions, an amount of twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-three thousand, and this is also the state's attorney's office. Any questions, comments?
Can't cut that.
What's that?
Can't cut that.
Well, we're asking for a recommendation, we already agreed on that.
These are, these are recommendations to transfer, for, to add.
I mean, you could cut if you were giving the positions.
Right.
Right, I see what you're saying.
All right, now, the next recommendation would be roads, maintenance, blacktop, an amount of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, and that would be money that would come from the reduction from the airport. And Mr. Holloway, Councilman Holloway, has offered to do another road trip.
Are you saying that all this seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is going to be spent in his district?
No, but he knows where the bad roads are.
We've had, we've had a very aggressive, like, Wayne's sitting here, and I want to thank you, and Wayne, and the county executive's office for all the work that has gotten, gotten done over the past few years on the county roads, and I was kind of disappointed to see that it was cut out, that million, it was a million dollars, about a million dollars that was cut, and we've been lucky, I guess, in the past year or so, we haven't had, paid a lot of money for salt and things like that, but there's still a lot of improvements that can be done, so, anyway.
All right, any more comments?
With additions to that, does that go into a general, would that go specifically for that purpose, is that correct?
For roads. Would that here be earmarked specifically for blacktop?
If, well, no, it's, it'd just go to roads for whatever they wanted to do with it, but that's up to the county executive, that's a management decision, you know.
But roads is where we would like to see it. Does that answer your question? All right, moving on, contractual services, an amount of sixty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, that's for the council. Any comments? All right, the total additions recommended would be one million one hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. Any comments?
For process reasons, I disagree with the first one.
The first one would be the sheriff?
Yeah. But pass that on.
I know the sheriff's underpaid, and if it's an opportunity to increase a salary, fifteen thousand isn't much, and I do understand what you're saying, but I do think the sheriff and his office is doing a good job, and I would like to, I'd like to make that recommendation.
But see, that's the thing, what you just said right there, you're making a personal, you know, I mean, I know you didn't intend it this way, but when you just made that statement, that sounds like a personal, you know, you're an elected official, I like what you're, like your job, so I want to give you more money, see, that's.
You got to look at the job, Larry.
That's right, that's my point.
You got to look at the job.
I don't see anything wrong with what Mr. Dodd said, he's an elected official, he's making a public statement, and that's what he feels, I don't see where that's, that is inappropriate.
Well, I do, if you say, if I say, John can, I like what you're doing, I like it, I'm in a position to give you more money, so I want to recommend I give you more money.
Well, as crazy as it sounds, you could do that at the beginning of the year, but it would take seven members to vote for it, at the beginning of the first elected year, you could do that, we could do that.
If I just go back, I'm just going back to fact, like, serving on that committee, and I know for, for two consecutive four-year cycles, I mean, the county executive position is grossly underpaid by far, and we had recommended a substantial increase in each of those.
I'm just curious. Why this is not available to the public? I tried to log in through Zoom, and I'm not getting a correct password.
Just from a process standpoint, is this what you're going to recommend?
That's our recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, I just like. I would again like to repeat.
I think they've got the Zoom feed open. They have a beauty. Larry, you forgot to mention too, when you finished the total additions, you forgot to mention that the salary goes into contingency, and we should want to say, is this amount going contingency in any of this that isn't used for those purposes?
We're going to consider.
And not contingency reserves.
Well, is it reserves, or is it contingency?
I think it's reserves it goes into.
I think it's contingency. Let's say it's Laura.
She's checking on that phone.
Yeah, because I think it's contingency.
It says on this paper contingency, is that contingency, or does it go to reserves?
I, um, the suggestion has, sorry, Lynn?
I just wanted to tell everybody I took him off the SIM call.
Okay.
The person who was trying to speak.
I might be wrong.
Yeah, because I always thought it's, yeah, I always thought it's contingency.
So, so what happens is, now, if the executive and the council do not agree, it goes to the prior use of fund balance, it did used to always be contingency, but there's been some disagreements on that, so we changed that in the charter a few years ago, so it goes to use a prior year fund balance. So it goes to use a prior year fund balance. I know that Wayne has suggested that this year that the money would go into contingency.
Which is, which is, that's okay. It's almost, I'm going to say one and the same, it's not one and the same, but it's pretty close to...
Yes.
That's pretty close to being one and the same. I mean, it still could be close spent, and it would have to come to us.
Was contingency or reserves, was contingency?
Well, we were on the salary thing. How about if we did this, just, once again, I just think it's fair, but once again, I'm just big about, it's to the position, to the office of, so if we're giving $15,000 to the office of sheriff, I think we should give $15,000 to the office of county executive.
I agree with you that the executive's office is underpaid, the executive's office is underpaid, just like the sheriff's office is.
Right, right, so I think we should do both then.
You just don't, you just don't do tit for tat. I mean, the budget is budget, whether you, if you want to address the executive branch, yes.
Okay, well, John, if you want to do that, then let's take out the $15,000 then.
And you can do that, that's your vote, but that's not my vote.
My vote is, we do 15 for both. It's to the office, to the office of the position.
You can propose that.
Right, that's what I'm proposing. I'm just trying to be fair.
But it's, it's...
We got one, I mean, we're cutting 2.9, we're cutting $3 million. I think we can take 15 and put to both positions.
Councilman McCain is making a recommendation to add $15,000 to the executive's budget.
Salary.
Salary.
That's what I meant for the salary.
Right.
Is there any comments, any questions?
Not in favor.
John?
Not in favor.
You're not in favor?
Not in favor.
Josh?
Why are we asking for recommendations? We didn't ask for people's comments on all these, so why are we asking on these?
The staff worked on this because council members were making suggestions, and this is a suggestion.
Okay, so these suggestions were made, and we didn't go through each one of these and ask what the council members' stance on them, so why are you doing them on each one?
We didn't have any arguments. I mean, he asked if there was any...
Any questions, comments? I asked it two or three times.
Nobody said anything. I don't think you've got any issues with any of it.
But now on the table, we have the $15,000 to the executive salary.
But I think to get to Ernie's point, I think Ernie's point is, some of these, just one person suggested it, so how is that any different? I'm suggesting that, so I'm just suggesting we add that to the list.
I'm listening to you.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I'm just, you know, saying that we add that to the list, $15,000 to the...
We're talking about it right now. Josh, I didn't hear what you said.
Again, well, you, like, you just said, somebody made a proposal to make the addition for the sheriff's salary. We talked about it. We didn't vote on whether we agreed on it, so why are we voting on whether we agree with the county executive salary?
It's okay, let's say he throws it in there. Now, that was his recommendation, so we'll vote on everything altogether.
I think what Ernie's saying is you need to take each one independently.
If that's what you're going to do, I mean, if you want to do that, you need to take every one of these independently, get everybody's opinion. We can do that too.
Right, or you, or like I say, or you just add it as an addition, and we just...
And then we can talk about it later, agree on it later, you know, like we did the rest of, just add it in there.
I think as it is right now, Ernie, with the presence present asking if there were any questions or concerns, and no one at the table had any questions and concerns, we're assuming that everyone's okay with what's been done so far. We've come to the first hiccup on this particular item. I think it should be, I think what Ernie's suggesting is that each needs to be addressed independently.
So you want to go down the line and vote on each one?
No, we've already, I think we've already established that. We've already established it, but this is one instance where we've, where something needs to be addressed in order to continue.
But my thing is, okay, so we didn't make any, we didn't make any hiccups on these, so are these already accepted and they're going to be approved? Or do we vote on these again, for a final vote?
Yeah, because we didn't agree on every one of them, we had questions on several of these.
He just actually had questions and comments.
Right.
We didn't vote on them.
We were going to vote at the end, but now we're adding, we're discussing adding it, and there was some discrepancy in...
So we're going to approve this at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
And so this will be it after the day?
Informally, it has to go to a formal vote on June 2nd.
Right, this is, we're just getting a consensus on everything today.
I'd like to add that, my suggestion is add the 15 to the executive salary, because they were cutting $3 million. I think we certainly, to be fair, they're both elected positions, we're not showing favoritism to one elected position over another, so I just think it would be fair to do that.
Right, that's your recommendation. Any discussion on that?
I guess my question is then, do all, do we add that to all elected officials now?
No.
No.
Okay.
The councils...
Unless you want to.
Yeah, but the councils, the councils will be recommended through that committee.
Okay, but I mean, like, other elected officials, like the, like Ms. Dykes, I mean, do we...
We don't, we don't do that, you know, we don't determine her...
That's state, that's state.
Some of them have to be approved by the state legislature.
Okay.
That's why I'm much more of a process person, so in general, I feel comfortable, you know, if we just, if we had a, it's one thing when we had a recommendation with Mr. Dunn and Mo Dericker and, you know, they had a good crew, and they came out and they had a good recommendation, and we went through that. That feels a little more substantive to me as a process, as opposed to just kind of, hey, we got money left over, there's a good person here, we'll throw some money that way. You know, just in general, but I totally feel like these offices are underfunded without a doubt. I mean, you can look across, any Mako's email will tell you how underfunded we are.
Absolutely.
Well, you know, and getting to Mr. Hastings' point, which I think this also might be something we should consider, we do have to do this, it's next year, correct? In the fall of next year?
For the budget, I mean, for the council salaries?
For the compensation, right, we have to consider the salaries. That would be a perfect time, and I think we should do it. Well, well, actually, do we do it in two years or do we do it...
Do it a year before we get it voted.
I think it's after the 22 election.
It's a year, no, it's a year before the election.
After the 2020 election.
Yeah, it's the beginning of the fourth year.
Right.
Which will take place, if it approves it, it goes into effect after the election.
It'll be a year and a half, I guess, it's like, it'd be like January of, so I think it'd be like a year and a half, we'll have to consider this, which is, I think, is a more appropriate, John. I'm like, one of the two, one of the two things, either we consider it then, we would normally consider it, which is kind of getting to Mr. Hastings' point, or if we are going to consider it now, then I think we should do it for both offices.
Mr. Hastings already spoke, Mr. Holloway?
You know, I don't have a problem with the $15,000 for the sheriff. I just think what we've been through in the past three years, that I can't support $15,000 extra for the county executive.
But see, that's my only point, you're back to people then, you're picking people over, over the job.
No, no, I'm looking at performance, Bill. I'm not looking, I'm not looking...
Right, but that's people.
I'm not looking, I'm not looking at favoritism, I'm looking at performance, okay?
Well, how's, how's performance, not looking at people?
You know what we've been through?
I'm saying that, but once again, it's to the position, the office of, it's not, I just don't think we should be picking people, you know, when they're elect, when they're in elected positions. That's the only, that's, that's my point.
I don't see it as any different, as I said before, than the, than an increase that the executive might recommend for a department head. It is what it is.
Right, but the executive didn't re-recommend it, we're recommending it.
No.
As a, as a likely thought.
I'm saying, our privilege to make these, these increases, if we choose to do so, is no different than the executive's privilege to make increases to his department heads.
And so, you know, you're mixing apples and oranges with that statement.
We have a difference of opinion, yeah.
We do. I agree with you.
Sometimes that's a good thing.
I'll smile on here, Bill, I trust you, I'll smile.
I can tell.
So there was a recommendation to add $15,000 to the executive's position salary. We have it on here, just like we have the sheriff's, so...
They can decide what they want to do with it, or we can at the end.
So do you want to have a vote on it?
Ernie, Ernie's asking if we should vote on every item on the list, is yea or nay on every item on the list.
We can do that, it's not going to take long.
Right.
That'd be fair, if you're going to do one, you got to do them all.
Just add it, and then we'll go down the list, and...
I thought we'd already done that, Ernie, because on every single line item...
We asked for discussion, we didn't necessarily ask for...
You didn't ask for a vote.
Yeah, I didn't take that as we're voting on...
Yeah.
Well, it's not a vote, it would be a consensus.
Consensus, yeah.
To vote yea or nay on it.
Yeah, we could go down piece by piece. It didn't take us long last year, I think, to do it. I made a couple notations, I didn't think we were voting on them yet either, I just made a notation next.
Yeah, I thought we were making our points, and so, I didn't realize you were, I mean, I want us to vote, I want us to get that done this evening, I'd like to see us do that.
Okay, starting with vacant salaries, do we have a consensus?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Well, without a vote, Larry, I think if there's any objections, you'll accept objections.
Okay, I think you're right.
Yeah, I wouldn't do the offer.
That would make it a formal vote.
Can I ask a real quick question on that? Because I literally walked in...
Is this a public meeting?
We just started when you walked in.
Is this a public meeting?
No.
Yeah, excuse me, you have to mute your phone, please. This is, it's open to the public to listen to and to view on PAC 14, but it's not for public input.
Yeah, but the link on the Zoom meeting is not...
I muted him. All right, I muted him. If he does that again, I'll take him off the call again.
I guess it would be important to explain to the public that during work sessions, it's not, there's no opportunity for public comments, it's simply a work session for the council to decide amongst itself what decisions we'd like to make. I think the purpose of that is to avoid prolonging a meeting where you could get a lot of back and forth with, you know, 10 or 20 different people in the community. So this process, as it is right now, is a work session, and the feedback for the community is in public comments, in other meetings or public hearings.
Right, they're entitled to send their comments for the next meeting.
We've had a public hearing.
Right. All right.
Yeah, yeah, because you were literally on that when I walked in, it's a big number, so I just wanted to, and I know we have the list here, so I just wanted to be clear on the fact that it's...
It is a big number, so do we have a consensus? Any opposition?
But are we looking to cut that whole list?
The 1,291, that everything's going to be reduced in the total of $2,908,200. That's the recommendation.
Did Wayne have any comments on that? Because like I said, I stumbled in right there.
Same word.
So we're eliminating all of these positions?
I can't hear you.
We're eliminating all of these positions?
Where we got to that page, Nicole?
Okay, all right.
They are, they are, they're, they're not, you're not eliminating the positions, you're just taking the funding out right now, since it is vacant.
Nobody's there, nobody's working.
Some of these positions have been vacant for years, and we've been funding the salary year after year.
I see, okay.
So some council members believe it's time to make a reduction to that.
So for clarity there, I know we had issues there with ferry operator briefly, we needed some folks to step in, let's say, and that's one of the items on here. If we need to hire somebody part-time in the future with the money that we cut, where does that come from, or how does that work to the public?
They'd make a recommendation, and then, what, that come from contingency?
I'm sorry, which one?
Let's say, for example, it was ferry operator, it was just randomly out of the roads department. So for the public's understanding, for anyone, and for all of us, let's say we suddenly, we did sweep that money, and let's say that it is actually, you know, it is needed again, like it was last year. Where would the money come from, or how does that work?
Yes, the money, they could make a request for a contingency transfer, and that request would come before council for approval.
And that could be done mid-year, after the budget's been struck?
Correct.
Right.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Any opposition? I know we had discussion, if not, we're going to move on to the next one. Social security, an amount of $98,831. Any opposition? Need a consensus. All right, moving on. COLA at the 3% with salary and social security, an amount of $480,635,000. Any comments on opposition?
And to be clear, that was a 5% proposed, and we're cutting it back to 3%?
3%, right, so they'd still be getting COLA.
Of 2%?
Of 3%.
3% instead of 5%.
Gotcha.
All right, and change the finance director to minimum, to minimum for grade 23, and that would be an amount of $61,675. Any opposition? Do you have a consensus?
We have authority to do that, is it?
Can't hear you.
We have authority, is that correct? Just to be clear.
Ms. Harley, can you explain that to him?
Um, yeah, so in the budget book, you do see the line items for the positions, you're just reducing the salary amount for that particular position.
Gotcha.
All right, now, moving on back to the reduction of the salary for the director of administration, reducing that, the current salary from $22,866 to 120. Any discussion? Any opposition? All right, moving on, the National Association of Counties membership, an amount of $1,975, it's coming from community promotions, any discussion? Any opposition? Moving on, advertising, an amount of $4,500. Any discussion? Opposition? Moving on. Advertising. Already said that, office supplies, an amount of $7,000. Any discussion?
And Levin, you'd mentioned before that this was, they had used last year, prior year was about $6,500?
Give me just one second, Josh. Uh, yeah, about $6,400 is their actual so far for this year. Their budget for this year was $8,000.
So the reduction still leaves them...
The budget, the reduction would take them down to $5,000.
All right, any discussion?
I mean, if it's office supplies, if it's something that's very necessary, I'd rather keep it at the best amount, if that's, I mean, they'd essentially, if they had another year, they'd be losing $1,500, or, pardon me, this is just year-to-date, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, so roughly $1,800 or so. I don't know if that's necessary, but I don't want to leave anybody without a stapler or, but that's, that's up to anyone else.
I mean, we could certainly fine-tune that number, I mean, it's a little bit arbitrary, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a cutting $7,000, I mean, if we're cutting even $6,000, that might cover that gap you're talking about.
Then again, too, keep in mind that any, any time that shortfall occurs during the year, they can, they can, you know, issue a request to the council for a transfer from contingency. I think the, the, the really, the engine behind this whole thing is the fact that we're trying to be as conservative as possible, knowing that we have, we're going to be in a very, yes, some counties right now, they're cutting 15, 10, I mean, 5% to 10% in their budget. Baltimore's cutting more than our entire budget from theirs. So we're trying to be as conservative as possible in anticipation of what may develop here.
And we have no idea what's going to go on from this point out. We don't know what our revenues are going to be like, so we're trying to be very conservative with this.
Yeah, no, fine, just keep, yeah, I don't want to quibble over $1,000.
Mr. McCain? I thought you had said something.
No, I'm good.
Okay, you're good?
Yeah.
All right, no opposition, and moving on to the next item, vehicle expenses for fuel, $7,000. Any discussion? Opposition? Any discussion? Opposition? Right, moving on. Meetings, seminars, conferences, reducing to seven thousand. Reducing seven thousand dollars from the executive budget. Any comments? Any opposition? Moving on. Contractual services, reduction of twenty-five thousand. Comments? Opposition? Moving on. Contingency, reduction of eight thousand dollars. Comments? Opposition? Moving on. One-time expense, an amount of twenty-five thousand. Comments? Opposition? Moving on. Transfer in county appropriations, an amount of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars from the airport to Rhodes.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
For that one, that cut would actually be for Department Forty-Six. It affects the airport, but the expense occurs in Department Forty-Six, which is on page one sixty-one
Okay.
of the budget book. That is, that is where the, the general fund is actually incurring that cost. The airport, Department Fifty-Two receives it as a revenue, so the cut would happen in Department Forty-Six, contingency transfer reserves.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any discussion? Opposition? Moving on. New auto leases, reduction of eighty-three thousand from Fund Forty-Seven. Any comments? Discussion? All right, again, that amount would be two million, nine hundred, eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Now moving on to additions, the increase in sheriff's salary, an amount of fifteen thousand for the department head.
Could I ask that we kind of talk about that and the executive simultaneously, because like I said, that affects.
You're more than welcome to.
Yeah, I mean, I know just for me, I want to do, you know, both, both or none, so, you know, I don't want to do one or the other, so, like, you know, I'm more than happy to support that if we're going to support the fifteen on the executive side.
Suggestion is both or none?
Right.
Any more comments on that?
They're both underfunded, without a doubt. Let's make that note, yeah.
I agree.
I understand the reason for putting them both, but I think for purposes of discussion, they should be treated as two separate items, or it's going to be very, a little bit complicated here.
No, actually, I'm making that decision because it simplifies it. It simplifies it for me. It's complicated if we deal in one at a time. And three people just said they agree with that.
I'll give you a yes and a no.
Okay, I'll take that, I'll take that and agree. Thank you, John.
So for, for the sheriff's salary, is it a yes or a no?
Yes.
Okay.
What was that?
Josh, for sheriff's salary for fifteen thousand, would you agree to that addition?
It's a yes to me, if we're doing the executive at fifteen thousand.
But it's a no if we're not, okay?
Yes, a no, it's not.
Which complicates, so you're okay with that. I will get to the executive next.
Yeah, I'd rather have a process for the salary, the executive, the sheriff, sorry.
Joe?
What?
Yes or no for the sheriff?
Excuse me, I have to interject. I'm sorry. We, I don't believe, Mr. Taylor, I don't believe we can do this for the executive branch. The executive can only be done at the beginning of the fourth cycle year.
I don't, I don't have my code with me. I'm not sure of that. That's, that's.
No, I think.
So you better earmark that one for further comment.
Yeah, I think you need to earmark that, because it's kind of gray, because the recommendation was made, so, so in some ways, it's kind of still, it's kind of still out there. It kind of floats out there.
Let's, let's, let's make sure we put a mental note on that with the executive for, for the next meeting, sure, sure.
So do you want to go ahead and get a consensus now? If we, if you can't do it, then it'll be a nay.
I was just bringing up a point order. I don't think we can do it. I don't think we have the authority.
All right, so let's just wait. But we can do it for the sheriff?
We'll have another, yeah, we'll have another meeting.
Yeah, that's why I was going to ask when we're done. I had a feeling we would. Joe, I didn't hear you on the sheriff.
Yes.
Yes. All right, Ernie?
All right.
Can't hear you.
Yes.
Yes, all right, chair votes, yes, there was a majority consensus on that.
That's the Council on Acting.
I'm sorry. Oh, I forgot you over there. You're usually on the phone.
Yes.
My apologies. You're hiding behind that mask and doing a good job. Can I hear you again?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so it is a majority. All right, moving on. Next discussion would be the sheriffs, prosecutors, and investigator.
Specialists.
What did I say, sheriffs? Thank you. Special prosecutors and investigator for the state's attorney's office. Do we have a consensus? Any opposition? Moving on. Social Security for the three above positions, twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Any discussion? Any opposition? Moving on. Rhodes for maintenance and blacktop, and that amount of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. Any discussion?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Is section fifty, is that capital expense?
Department Fifty is the Rhodes department.
Okay, thank you. Rhodes Maintenance Blacktop, I'm assuming then it would go specifically into capital, right?
Uh, that is.
Uh, we shouldn't, if we're, if we're dealing with it now, it should be operating.
That's part of their operating account.
Rhodes isn't considered capital. I mean, blacktopping isn't considered capital.
I'm not talking about capital as in CIP. I just mean it's a capital expense.
No, it's, that, that line item, Rhodes Maintenance Blacktop, is a part of their, their operating category.
Okay, so it would go sort of into that category as, all right, I just want to make sure it's specific enough that they.
Right, so you got your salaries category, your benefits category, your operating category, that's where the blacktop is.
Right, so the, I'm getting, what I'm trying to make is that I want to make sure that, you know, the council wants to make sure it's used for that, that it did not be used for something, the salaries that we just reduce. Okay, thanks.
Good point.
Is that the best way to earmark it for Rhodes?
I think that's what Levin's saying, it is a category.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Any opposition?
But I think you do need to put, as we were talking about the executive thing, with an asterisk. Of course, we may or may not be able to do that, but I think we ought to put it on there with the asterisk.
Were you talking about the, the executive salary?
Right.
Yeah, I'll get to that.
Yeah, I mean, on the list, you know, but with an asterisk.
Yeah, I'm down at the bottom. I was going to bring that up after we get done with contractual services. An amount of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Any discussion? Any opposition? All right, now the asterisk for the county executive salary, so you're going to look into that?
Yeah, I should be able to get that to you in twenty-four hours or less.
Okay. And that is an amount of fifteen thousand?
Why don't we keep that as a pending?
Yes.
Let's just keep that as a pending until Mr. Taylor can give us a decision.
It's fine.
Okay.
We'll be discussing it again.
Yes.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Taylor?
No, just, just what I said.
All right, and next, to contingency, one million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
That would have to be pending as well, because that amount will change depending on what happens with the executive salary.
That's right.
Or, or any, any of the other additions, as far as that goes.
Sure.
And then anything else would go into contingency as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion on that?
Are we talking about the whole sheet here?
Yes.
I'd like to say something, and I was going to wait until we do the budget, but I'll, and I might say it then, too. We've cut three, was it three mil, almost three million dollars, and reassigned one point four, one million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. We've been very fortunate in the past couple of years for revenues, and that's, that's why all this looks the way it is. This would be the perfect time to do a reduction in property taxes. However, and I would be all over that if it wasn't for the situation we're in with the COVID-19 situation of what's going on, and of all the news that we've seen, and possibly what we've heard of what could be coming down the road as far as revenue reductions, so I won't suggest that.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you.
I won't suggest that, Bill.
Thank you.
Mr. Holloway, it was a good thought.
At this time. And like I say, we did it before, and it would be great to be able to do it this year, and if it wasn't for what was going on with the, what we're assuming the economy will be in the near future, I would, I would make that recommendation, but I guess I won't do that this year.
Very noble of you, Mr. Holloway. All right, Mr. Hastings?
Adding on to that, I think it's also very important to understand that Wycomico County, a great amount of money that comes into this county is funded by the state, by the goodwill of the state of Maryland, you know, and we get a lot of disparity money and others. I think that's important to point out, that, you know, that we'd be in much more dire straits and have much more, much more issues if it weren't for the fact that the state of Maryland goes out of its way every year to look on the poorest counties, and we happen to still rank in there. So I want to continue to make sure that's noted, and I say that specifically because we're already looking at some pretty dramatic reductions potentially with the state of Maryland in the coming year. And so we've been in their, their good favor for a long time, but I hope we continue to stay that way, and hopefully that these, things aren't as bad as they end up being projected to be, given the effect of COVID-19.
Yeah, the state's been very good with us, with the schools, for instance.
Right.
Any more discussion on that? We do have to vote on this budget. We also have to vote on the CIP. Is there any discussion or recommendations for the CIP? I know we've got one hot issue. Ms. Ackley?
Um, it's, uh, Mardella.
Can't hear you either.
Uh, Mardella. It's back in the CIP, but.
Right, yeah, have you seen the most updated, I mean, I think there's.
Email.
Right, yeah, there's an update to it, so have we seen the updated CIP?
I saw the one for the next year. The recommendation for, what was that, twenty twenty-two?
Yes, so Mr. Strausberg stopped by the office today and suggested that perhaps the county executive would put Mardella in the CIP, beginning in fiscal year twenty-two, and he would use the same numbers that the Board of Ed has proposed for that project and their CIP. For fiscal year twenty-one, he has said that the county executive would consider putting funding in, but he would not know any, any guarantees until January. Just because of the uncertainty of what the state's going to do, as far as, you know, if they're going to cut our disparity grant money or HUR money, we just don't know at this time.
Nothing that's good. I mean, I think that's the best we can do, given the circumstances, but I think it's very important that it be in the CIP. Because any monies that come available and so forth, none of that can happen if it's not in the CIP. So I think that's very, very important. I think, you know, we have a lot of citizens that will be very, I think will be pleased with that.
Right, and it's a positive move in the right direction, and the citizens of that school district will definitely be pleased. Any more discussion on the CIP?
Yeah, I have something on that.
Mr. Taylor?
The, you know, the airport water main extension is not listed in the capital budget. Have to distinguish now between the CIP, that's a five-year plan, and the first year of it, which would be fiscal year twenty twenty-one. That becomes the capital budget, and that's, those are pages in the budget book, not in that CIP document. So there's two aspects of it. First of all, getting the money, and then, secondly, spending it. So I've suggested, and I've talked to Levin about this, and Laura to some extent, I think that would be prudent to put that in there. I don't know why it's not, because if we're going to do it, it's a capital project, obviously, that we're going to do in this, in this coming year. In fact, I think they may have already started on some of the, some of the work. So that's an item that I think should be addressed before the budget is adopted, and I don't know why the executive branch would have any real opposition to that.
Yeah, Kate?
Just as a reminder, though.
Ms. Harley?
The county council cannot add to the CIP.
I understand that.
That has to be done by the county executive.
I understand that, and that's why I'm bringing that up. I don't know why the executive would not want to do that, because they want to do the extension.
Kate, Laura, can you make sure that message gets passed to Wayne in the morning?
Yeah.
Because it, it might just be oversight.
Yeah.
Or hopefully, but, you know, that makes perfect sense, obviously, that, you know, because obviously the project's been approved and so forth, it's got a, probably should be there.
Yeah, I'll touch base with him on that.
Mr. Hastings?
I was saying, you know, it's a project that they were advocating for, it wouldn't make logical sense.
Yeah, there is, there is one other aspect of it, and I just pointed out, that would obviously, it's going to increase our, our borrowing, because they're going to borrow money for that, something in the range of, I think, two and a half million dollars. That's also not listed, so the number that's in there now, which is twelve million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand and change, is going to be fourteen and a half, somewhere in that range, when that other money is thrown into it, because they're going to borrow that money fairly soon.
Yeah, so it sounds like they need to give us a revised.
Yeah.
CIP.
Revised CIP with, that's two different items that need to be.
So that low-interest loan has to be in the CIP as well?
That's going to be borrowed money, yeah.
It should be. If they're going to get the loan in fiscal year twenty-one, they certainly should consider adding it. They could always come back to council if it's not in the budget, but at some point in time, council would have to approve it.
Yeah, I mean, my, my point is essentially the work's going on, and I mean, if it wasn't going to start until December, yeah, well, that might make sense, just come back in December, but the fact of the matter is, if I'm not mistaken, I think they're out there.
Are they, but are they, are they anticipating that it might happen prior to the end of the twenty twenty fiscal year?
Probably, yeah, probably their first draws aren't going to come due, though, Bill.
No, I could just say, right, I just.
I haven't had that discussion with them, so I'm not sure.
If you just could have that discussion with them in the morning, I think, I don't think they'd have an issue with that, just, we just want to make sure it's dealt with correctly.
Right.
All right.
President Dodd?
Ms. Ackley.
I just, I just had another, another thought, was the appropriation for Mardella, will that keep that on track with the state?
I didn't understand what you said. I hate these masks. I'm glad when we don't have to use these.
The appropriation, I mean, I'm thankful that he put it back on the CIP, but is the appropriation that he made, will that keep Mardella on track with the state?
You know, and.
With the state. The state's already approved it.
I think you make a, I think you make a very good point. Someone brought it to my attention that if they didn't put seven hundred thousand into the fiscal year twenty-one budget, that that could create a real problem, so I think we need to address that with the executive branch to see whether or not that's a valid consideration.
All right.
Sounds good.
Okay.
You get it, Ms. Harley?
Thank you.
Because, you know, and that would also impact the operating budget, correct? Mr. Taylor, you've made some very good points, I think, in some exchanges over the last month, reference to the CIP, where all your concerns addressed as in references to old money. Yeah, let me, can I? Which had never really been. Yeah, I can hit that, I think, real quickly. There were two, there were two items in this year's capital budget that were in there with bond financing. And of course, we never went to the bond market, so that money didn't, doesn't exist. I mean, we don't have it, we didn't go to the bond market. Those two projects were Beaver Run, which was seven million dollars, and the West Side Collector Phase Three, which was two million, total of nine million for bonding, that never happened. The Beaver Run is still in there, and it's roughly six point four million of leftover money from other bond issuances. We've talked about that. And that's in the CIP for this coming year, the capital budget for this coming year. There's about a six hundred thousand dollar difference there. I don't know how that's to be handled, but I just noticed, you know, just note that six point four is six hundred thousand dollars less than seven. The other item, West Side Collector's not in the capital budget this year, so that's not a problem of any kind.
Okay.
So that would, those were the two concerns that I had, and that's how they, those have been addressed.
They have been addressed?
Yeah, other, you know, there's a six hundred thousand shortfall from what was originally seven million in this year's budget. Whether that's going to pose a problem or not, I don't know. I'm not that familiar with the project.
Okay.
It's my understanding it is going to pose an issue with them funding Beaver Run.
It might. I mean, I, six hundred thousand dollars ain't chump change.
Any more discussion on CIP? Recommendations, all right?
I mean, could we make the recommendation on Beaver Run?
What kind of recommendations?
It be funded, it be fully funded if needed?
They're going to have to fund it because it's already started. It's just a matter of them going to bond sale to get the money. Beaver Run has already started.
Okay, but I mean, there was a six hundred thousand dollar reduction. Can we ask them to increase that back to the seven?
They may have worked out, they may have worked out something that solves the problem. We just don't know. I mean, I have to look at the project budget and where do they stand, what their draw schedule is, you know, just don't know.
My glasses are falling.
The only other thing.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Harley, where do we go from here?
If I could.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to go back. We jumped into CIP really quick, caught me off guard. There are some concerns, I think, that, that Mrs. Hurley and Mr. Hitchens had brought to our attention in reference to some inconsistencies in pay grade, position classifications, job titles, and I think we need to have some type of, across the board, understanding with the council that a very strong recommendation needs to be made. And I guess it has to be made through this, through the budget itself, I guess, I mean, through the budget itself in some type of form. But how are, how are we going to do that as far as assuring there's consistency here?
Yes, so I've asked Mr. Taylor to draft some language regarding a few things that you guys want to consider for the budget bill.
Yeah, is it at the table? I think people. There was one at my desk, so I.
Yes, yes, there is.
It says at the top, proposed for the FY twenty twenty-one budget bill.
I don't think.
Here, here's an extra one.
Yes.
Does everybody have one?
Look underneath that.
Yeah, this addresses three different things that have been, I've been asked to develop language on. The very first one I'll skip over for right now, because it's not. The very first one I'll skip over for right now, because it's not what you were asking about. But there are really a couple of things that are in the budget that are matters that require specific action by the council other than in the budget. The budget is just simply listing what your expenses are planned to be and what your revenues plan to be, not anything else. The first item in that second whereas group A are increases in the landfill fees. Two increases, they're not a whole lot, they're $60 to $65. The one is $60 to $65 per ton for the basic tipping fee for the, for large users. And then there's the individual, what I call the homeowner's fee, which is your yearly permit, if you bring stuff out in your car, your pickup or something, that's also going from $60 to $65 in the budget. Well, the budget doesn't change those. Typically, those fees and all the other fees have been set by the council by resolution. So we need to do a resolution. We can do it on June the 2nd, assuming that council wants to make those changes. If they don't make those changes, then I would assume the revenue estimates for the land, for the solid waste, the landfill, are then gonna have to be revised, because if you aren't making the increase that the executive wants, presumably, you're not gonna get the revenue, higher revenue amount, so that's A. And as I say, we have a resolution, pass it, it's done, assuming you want to make that change. B goes to the employee positions, and there are, if you go through the budget, the employee positions are essentially line items in the budget that give a classification description, and I've looked at it to some extent, I think Levin has, and Laura has, too, and there are a lot of change, there are a lot of changes. By that, I mean more than one or two. The Personnel Manual provides that for any classification change, it's got to be essentially recommended to council and approved by council, and that would be, again, a separate process from the budget process. Now, it would seem to me that since the executive branch hasn't initiated, hasn't come to the council with what they call the evaluations that they're supposed to present if they want to change classifications, that it's unlikely that you're gonna be able to do that before you adopt the budget. So what I've provided is that there would be a whereas clause, and that's B, pointing these things out, that there are changes, the budget includes change in classification of certain county employee positions for which submission of evaluation thereof to the council and its approval are required under the Personnel Manual. And then it goes on to say, because that process has not been initiated by the executive branch, and therefore cannot be completed by council prior to adoption of the budget, such change has not been approved by the council at this time, and thus, the budget does not correctly indicate the classification of those positions. And I think that addresses, I believe, what your concern is. So
Do you add to that, like, a recommendation as far as, and with a timeframe or something for that to be brought to us? Or do you just leave it like it is?
I mean, I think you kind of have to leave it like it is, that we've asked them or pointed out to them that they haven't complied with the with the regulations. I mean, we can't order them to do it.
Right.
But there are some concerns of that kind. Now, in terms of all of the positions in the budget, I'm guessing, Levin, you can correct me, I mean, we may be talking about at most, what, a couple dozen, maybe three dozen?
That are affected?
Yeah, that were the classifications that have to change, but not
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe 2024, so
Something, yeah, something in that range. I mean, I've not looked through item by item. I think we need to do that and get that straightened out. Just along that same line, this is really not a problem in the budget this year, but at least in terms of looking into this, there appear to be a whole bunch of employee positions, we went through some of the ones that are vacant a little while ago, that have been vacant in some cases for years, and it seems to me that after the budget's done and the dust settles, you might want to go and just eliminate any positions that have not been filled for two or three years, and just get them, essentially, get them off the books. You know, like, every now and then you clear your bad debt off your books, because you know you're not gonna collect it. That would be a suggestion, and if a particular department says, well, we haven't filled this, but this is really essential, and we're still trying to fill it, then you can make an exception. But to keep just vacant positions on your books for years and years, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Now, there is one other up at the top, the first whereas clause, while we're on this, I might as well discuss it, and that has to do with the stamp that is on the fifth page of the budget document, which is signed, I think we all know who it is, it's somebody purporting to act as a director of finance, certifying funds. The funds aren't specified, so I don't know what funds are being referenced. And it's been pointed out to me that that certification could be deemed as some sort of an acknowledgement of what it says and the person's position that's listed there. I've also been told, don't know this personally, but I've been told that the threat's been made by the executive branch that if that stamp is removed or masked over, whited out, that that would then, in the opinion of across the hall, change the form of the budget, and there is a section of the charter that provides that the council can't change the form of the budget. And that that then, I think this is another leap, would mean that the executive's budget as presented to the council would stand adopted as presented, without any of these changes you've been discussing tonight. I don't think that's a valid argument, but I would suggest, and I think I've talked to a couple members of council about this, that rather than getting into another fight over things, that it would be best, and I've put language in here that indicates that council does not deem this stamp to mean anything at all. And that would be the preferable way, in my opinion, of handling that, because there's enough tension and acrimony already existing. I don't think the stamp amounts to a hill of beans myself. It's not required by the charter as part of the budget. It doesn't mention anything about a stamp or certification by anyone, and the, even if we had a director of finance, that position doesn't present the budget, the executive does. So, as I say, I don't see a whole lot of meaning to that stamp. So that's, those are the whereas clauses.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do you think that, are you suggesting, then, as far as to address all these inconsistencies that we have here, that there would be an addendum that would be added to the budget, or how would the process be where we would we would include it in the budget to make sure they recognize the necessary changes that we want?
I think the whereas clause is essentially do that. Now, down in the declaration part of it, we could perhaps reiterate them. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
And obviously, if you increase the tipping fees, that one's out the window anyway. That's not, no longer a problem.
That'd be a separate, yeah, that's a separate.
Yeah, so
So, otherwise, you're saying the legislative bill, when we approve the budget, through the legislative bill, that it will be in the whereas?
Yeah, that's the purpose of this.
You would have to do an amendment to the actual budget bill to add these whereas paragraphs.
Well, or just as it's introduced. I mean, we could do it either way.
The bill was already introduced. The budget bill was introduced.
That's true, yeah, you're right.
So it would be an amendment to the original budget bill?
Right.
Yeah.
There is one other item. I didn't do a whereas clause on it because we already have it in this year's budget, and that is the payment of money to people who have not been properly confirmed by the council and therefore aren't authorized, and I think that should be reiterated.
Didn't we do that in last year's budget?
Yes, yeah, we did. And that's why I say I didn't put it in here, because we've already done that and have that.
One quick comment, could I make Mr. Taylor, your first whereas? I mean, I think your meaning there is fine. You've addressed the issues. There's a little bit of rhetoric in there, like, especially at the end. I mean, the chaos part, I wouldn't mind seeing that removed or reworded. It's not a big deal, but I feel that's just a little, we lost our way a little bit there with that, if you don't mind.
Okay, I mean, give me a call.
Sure.
Okay.
So is everyone okay with this recommendation?
Yes.
I'd like to just make a comment that I think it would be extremely important for council to have a work session with the HR director regarding the paying classification plan as soon as this budget is adopted, so that way you can start working on correcting those discrepancies.
So as Ms. Hurley and Mr. Taylor recommend, it sounds like we've got some housekeeping measures to do and take care of after the budget?
Yes.
What, and speaking of those housekeeping measures, one thing, we kind of touched on this a little bit earlier when we were talking about that compensation review committee, and I think this is something we probably, I think we have to bring this before the charter review committee. But this has been brought up several times. The timing of that has been, and the charter review committee has said the same thing, that no one likes the timing of it. Because it's in an election year. You're doing it in the fourth year of the cycle, in January, the fourth year of the cycle. So at that point in time, you already know, when they're doing the review and so forth, you know who's running for office.
Right.
So it seems like it would make much more sense if it was done, for example, even if it's a year earlier, but it's almost like any time, but the last year, yeah, that seemed to be, I don't think anybody had thought about when that was first, the date was first put into the charter, but that has become sort of a, it is sort of a problematic timing. So I think, I don't think we can, well, you tell me about it, I don't think we can, I'm not sure if we can change that.
We discussed it
Can we do it with a supermajority vote?
We discussed it one time before, but I don't remember what came
Well, I was gonna say, I think, I think part of the problem with that is that there's language in the state code
Yeah.
that also governs that process, and I think we concluded that you probably have to do it the way we're doing it now, that you can't change that. I can go back
The way or the date?
The timing. In other words, when you do it. In other words, you can't do it any earlier than what's allowed under the state code.
Mr. Taylor, can you find out when you can do that?
Yeah, I can, I've got a memo, I think, on that.
Because I'm like Mr. McCain, I don't like doing it the last year, because it seems like you're voting on a salary increase for the current members that are running for reelection.
Right, right, you know
So I don't like that.
The committee, the committees brought that up each year. I mean, they would like to see it
And no one's acted on it.
Yes.
Mrs. Hurley has that on her list of recommendations for the charter review committee.
I have a lot of charter provisions that need to be looked at.
Yeah, I thought we might have it on there, too.
So, Mr. Taylor, if you can find that, let us know, and that way we can include that.
Yeah, I hope I can do that in 24 hours, too. I should be able to, because I've got it, yeah.
I understand. And, Ms. Harley, where do we go from here?
Um
Home.
Do we have another comment, Mr. McCain?
Home.
Home, okay.
So I guess my question for council is, do you feel as though we need to have another budget session to work out the county executive salary increase, or?
That's a pretty minor thing. I think we can address that once we get the answer.
We can do that at the next meeting.
Right.
Okay, so you want to proceed for the adoption of the budget on June the 2nd, is what I'm hearing?
I think that's good.
Yeah. Is everybody good with that?
I think it's good, I think it's good for our county, too, frankly, just to
Get it away.
Right, well, you know, to get it done, and I just think that's a healthy thing to do.
So will we be voting on the CIP and the budget at the same time?
That is correct.
Okay. So June 2nd, it is. All right, any discussion? Need a motion?
Some motion. Some motion. I'm just seconded.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate everyone for attending, and it really is difficult to understand what people are saying with these masks, so hopefully, June 2nd, we won't have to wear the mask.
Oh, no, you'll have to still wear the mask.
Okay, and so will visitors that want to come into the meeting.
That is correct.
And they will be scanned for other temperatures.
And go get those shields from us.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.